On the stage with me is our town clerk, all the way at the end, Danielle Secard, and two town council this evening. We have Kate Betterhoff to my immediate right and Matt Preventer joining us as well. We do have a forum already, which is fabulous, but I just want to go over some rules before we get started here. It's easy. Seated on front of me and front of me on the floor is the select board. We have Johnny Folgenetti, Craig Barger, Mark Lamb, Jennifer Stacy, and Jamie Devens, also our town administrator, the great Connor Reed. And seated to my left on the floor are the members of the finance committee. They will be, all of them, not collectively, but separately, will be making recommendations on the articles that we go through this evening. We have 11 articles. I want to recognize department heads, committee members who are here also to answer any questions that anybody may have so that we can make good decisions for our town. If you're a registered voter, please make sure you check in.
If you check in, everybody should have one of these fabulous little orange cards that I look for at every vote. When it comes time to vote, I'm going to ask you to raise your orange card. If it's a yes vote, then raise your orange card. If it's a no vote, that way I can actually see who's saying yes and who's saying no to any particular article. If you're not a registered voter, but you want to participate or be here, this section down here to my right, to the left at the bottom, is where non-registered voters can sit. So just by, just a couple of rules. If you want to speak on any particular article, you have to wait until the explanation is finished. When I invite comments, questions, or concerns, there are two microphones kind of in the middle level here. I ask you to approach one of the microphones. You need to state your name and your address because Danielle Secard is recording everything for the minutes, so we need name and address. Even if you think we all know who you are, I need name and address each and every time to make a comment. And speaking of each and every time, so you can comment on any warrant or any, I'm sorry, any article. One time, keep your comments to that one article. Make sure you comment just one time. Finish what you have to say. Collect your thoughts. Finish what you have to say, and then sit down so the next person can say whatever they have to say on that relative to that particular article. Again, this meeting is being recorded by ECAT right in the middle here, so that's another reason why we need to make sure that we are saying our names and our addresses and speaking loudly and clearly because it's all recorded by ECAT. And we want to make sure that everybody can take a look and make sure we can all hear what everybody's saying. All speakers are going to be treated with courtesy by the moderator. Again, any comments, questions, concerns have to be relative to that particular article that we're discussing, not any other article, not anything that doesn't have to do with the town meeting, okay? I'll recognize motions to move questions, but in my opinion, if there are still people waiting to speak who may add to the discussion, I'll exercise my authority to not accept a motion at that time. Again, voting is done by a show of hands. And if you wish to make an amendment on any motion, this is really important. If you wish to make an amendment, I need you guys, you all, to put it in writing because, again, it's something that needs to be recorded in our minutes, and it's really important to have any amendments in writing so that we get the amendments correct. Okay? So the clerk has confirmed that the return of the warrant is in order, and we have a quorum. This evening, we are joined by Cub Scout Group 193, who has kindly accepted my offer and my request to conduct the Pledge of Allegiance or help us out with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm going to ask you guys if you want to come up to the stage now.
Please run me the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance: To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So today is November the 14th, 2022. It is 7:10, and the Easton Town Special Town Meeting is called to order. Article one.
I move that the town vote to appropriate by transfer from free cash the sum of $1 million to be placed into the stabilization fund.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article moves $1 million of available free cash to the stabilization fund in accordance with the town's financial management guidelines and the ongoing goal to build up reserves. Once transferred, the balance of the stabilization fund will be approximately 5.7 million, the select board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article one?
Kathleen Green, 5 Mary Diehl Lane, Northeastern. I'm just wondering, do you have a goal that you want to obtain for the stabilization fund?
Hi, Connor Reed, Town Administrator. Yes, we do. It's a good question, and for the first time, I think, ever, we're nearing that. We have a fund-to-balance policy and financial management policies that establish 10% of our annual operating budget as the goal for our total reserves, which is partially stabilization funds and partially free cash. So with this, we'll be hovering around the high nine percentile range. When we adopted those policies, it was closer to 4% or 5%.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article one? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of Article one passing, please raise your orange cards. This has to be a simple majority, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article one passes by majority. Article two.
I move that the town vote to appropriate by transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to be placed into the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund established in accordance with Section 20 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 32B.
Second.
The explanation is, this article sets aside additional funds towards retiree health insurance by making a transfer into the town's OPEB trust fund. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article two? Seeing none. Article two needs a simple majority to pass. All of those in favor of Article two, please raise those orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article two passes by majority. Article three.
I move to dismiss Article three.
Second.
Explanation: There are no prior year bills to be paid. Did you not hear me?
No clapping for that? All those, all those in favor of Article three, please raise your orange card. This needs a simple majority vote to pass. All those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article three passes by majority. Article four.
I'm going to speak right into it, so hopefully you can hear me. You still can't hear me? I move that the town vote to revoke the acceptance of civil service laws for the town of Easton police officers at all ranks, including the chief of police effective July 1, 2023, thereby removing the police force from the provisions of the civil service laws and the rules and regulations relating to the same, providing that this revocation will not affect the civil service status of existing personnel in their current positions.
Second.
By way of explanation, the town meeting adopted civil service in 1929 for all police officers and the chief of police pursuant to Articles six and seven, respectively, of the town meeting warrant for March 4th, 1929. Police officers and firefighters are the only civil service government employees in the town of Easton. Civil service restricts who can be on a hiring list based on multiple choice tests issued statewide. The number of applicants to be considered are limited by the number of vacancies available. The restrictions set forth by civil service restricts the town's ability to hire qualified candidates in a timely manner. Civil service does not prescreen candidates for disqualifying matters and requires Easton to extensively document why a candidate is not selected for appointment subject to a time-consuming appeal. Such civil service appeals relating to labor disputes can take multiple months to be heard and decided, and in some cases, can take multiple years, which is deleterious to the interests of the town and employees seeking expeditious review of their appeal. The Easton Police Department believes that the current list, where the town competes for candidates with all other civil service police departments in the state, is limiting the pool of quality candidates. Leaving civil service will allow Easton to establish hiring processes to test candidates, create the opportunity to forge community workforce pipeline partnerships with local and regional educational institutions, and will enhance the size and quality of the candidate pool. Easton will be able to prescreen and identify quality candidates with diverse backgrounds, college or military experience, prior experience in police service, community service, language proficiencies, and other types of skills that would best serve our community. Further, the proposed change would provide the town of Easton with more control over personnel choices by allowing the town to set its own policies, requirements, and procedures for hiring and subject to bargaining promoting officers. While leaving civil service provides more flexibility on recruitment and promotions, it would not eliminate important standards for training, qualifications for hiring, or police officer certification. For example, whether in civil service or not, any candidate for the Easton Police Department would need to complete the Massachusetts Municipal Police Academy and would be subjected to background checks, physical examinations, and psychological examinations prior to being hired. Once hired, officers must maintain certification from the State Peace Officers Standards and Training Commission post, which was created by the 2020 Massachusetts Police Reform Law to remain in service. Leaving civil service also does not change that the Easton Police Department is a Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission accredited department, which observes the highest standards of training, policy review, and practice. It does not change the principles currently responsible for all job solicitation, hiring, promotion, discipline, or termination, which are laid out in the town charter to the town administrator or department heads in their direction, including the chief of police. Nor does it eliminate the ability for employees to seek, review, or arbitration, or adverse unemployment decisions. The select board, town administrator, chief of police, the police patrolman union, and the police supervisors' union all support leaving civil service.
Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any comments, questions, comments, or concerns? If you have a question or comment, you have to approach the microphone. We have one person up there. Name and address, please.
Mark Carpenter, 12 Adams Street. Just, are there any downsides? I mean, it sounds great, but do we lose any subsidies or funding for the police or anything like that?
No, we would not.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Gary Erickson, 134 Sheridan Street. I see that police and fire are both a part of the civil service process. Is there something coming in the future where fire department is going to ask for the same, or is the fire department not looking to do this at this time?
So you have to leave civil service, the same mechanism through which you entered. Police in Easton in 1929 joined or accepted civil service through town meeting. The fire department accepted civil service, not including the chief, through a ballot referendum at an actual election, so it wouldn't be done through town meeting. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Sir, do you have a question right here in front?
Is there a representative from the police department here? And whether they agree or oppose to what you're asking, I'd like to hear from them also.
That's a great question. Can we have your name and address?
Lenis Drackman.
And where do you live?
Len, what's your address?
What?
Your address. We have to have it for the minutes.
37, yeah. 37, I'm with you.
All right, thank you.
Also, is he here?
Yes, but that's not to be discussed tonight. We can connect you with him.
Hi, good evening. Keith Wu and the police chief. We do support it. I do support it. I do. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to this article? I see somebody. Okay.
Hi, Lisa Hurley, 111 Paquana Cat Avenue. I was wondering if removing or leaving this would have any impact on any processes that we may have to make sure there's no discrimination in the screening or hiring process?
So it's a good question. Civil service has language relating to anti-discrimination, but there's also, it's illegal in Massachusetts for a public employer to be discriminatory in the hiring process, whether we're in civil service or not. So those statutory anti-discrimination provisions don't go away by leaving.
Okay, I understand that, but...
You would need to...
Sorry. No, I understand that it's illegal in Massachusetts. I just was wondering if this has anything involved with it that would make it easier or harder, you know, to discriminate? You know, there's been a lot of stuff like certain screenings and tests inadvertently, you know, cause discrimination, and that's kind of more what I'm worried about.
Sure. Are you referring to a Superior Court decision that's in the news this past week?
Not specifically, no.
Okay. Well, so there was a Superior Court decision in Massachusetts the past week very germane to this topic where, I think it was Superior Court, I'm probably getting that wrong, but a court in Massachusetts found that the multiple choice examination process used for promotions within civil service departments in Massachusetts is not necessarily effective and has a negative outcome on candidates of color. That is a separate decision than what inspired this. We've been working towards this for months, but in our view, that edifies our request to leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article four? Okay, seeing none. Article four requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor of Article four passing, please raise those orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article four passes by majority. Article five.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,118,743 to amend fiscal year 2023 departmental budgets, including cost items for ratification of collective bargaining agreements, specifically local 2790 IAFF Fire, the Eastern Patrol Officers Association, the Eastern Police Supervisors Association, the Southeastern Public Employees Association, Eastern Clerical Unit, the Southeastern Public Employees Association Water Division Unit, the Southeast Public Employees Association DPW Unit, and Professional Administrative Employees Association as printed in the supplement attached to the warrant titled Article five: Amend Fiscal Year 2023 Budget. And that to meet this appropriation, $528,462 shall be raised from taxation. $65,000 shall be transferred from fiscal year 2023 employee benefits and insurance budget. $249,509 shall be transferred from free cash. $160,772 shall be transferred from water receipts. $115,000 shall be transferred from water surplus. And further, that the sewer enterprise budget be amended by reducing sewer budget be amended by reducing sewer receipts in the amount of $75,000 and transferring $75,000 from sewer betterment receipts reserved for appropriation.
Sir?
By way of explanation, this article will adjust the fiscal year 2023 operating budget revenues and expenditures, including first-year funding of three-year collective bargaining agreements with various town unions.
Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Five? Okay, seeing none. Article Five requires a simple majority vote to pass. All of those in favor of Article Five, please raise your orange cards, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article Five passes by majority. Article Six.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,089,767 to supplement the capital budget needs of the town for fiscal year 2023 as printed in the warrant under Article Six, and that to meet this appropriation, $891,037 shall be transferred from free cash, $33,500 shall be transferred from available mitigation funds, $143,927 to be transferred from available Medicaid cost recovery funds, $8,574 be transferred from surplus funds voted pursuant to Article Seven of the November 8, 2021 special town meeting, $9,446 shall be transferred from surplus funds voted pursuant to Article Five of the November 30, 2020 special town meeting, and $3,283 shall be transferred from surplus funds voted pursuant to Article 10 of the May 17, 2021 annual town meeting.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article addresses additional capital needs for fiscal year 2023 that were not able to be funded at the annual town meeting in May. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Six?
No, I have a question.
Do you have a question, sir? Not on this article?
Is it on this article?
I expected when I came here to hear from someone in the water department to find out what's happening, why they... Initially, there were two wells that were compromised, and I can't imagine why they weren't cut off. That's what we were told at the beginning. I'd like an update that concerns everybody in this room.
Okay, but...
Because we are no different in this town than what's going on with the Marines in Paquana Cat.
It's not, I know.
Their water is compromised, and so is ours.
We can talk about this.
And we need to talk about it. Forget about appropriating funds. You can do that anytime. This is important. People may be dying because of it.
Sir, while we appreciate your sentiments...
I'd like to hear from Richard Churney Jr.
So, in regards to this article, this, your question doesn't apply to this article or any other article having to do...
No, I don't want to have a conversation. I want to ask some questions in front of all these people. Guess what? It ought to be, it's more important than what you are doing. It's absurd what you people are doing. You're trying to shut off the town and not giving any information? Who the hell do you think you are? And how long you gonna be there for, sir?
Sir, sir, this has nothing to do with anything that's on the warrant this evening or anything that has been, is on any of the articles this evening. If you would like to express your concerns, you can go to a board meeting where you could express the concerns that you're talking about.
I'd like to know why those two compromised wells weren't shut off.
Sir, there's nothing on the warrant that can, that you can address this with.
Well, it ought to be. Why shouldn't it be there?
Well, there isn't anything on the warrant this evening.
We got postcards with no information on it.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to stop.
What's wrong with you people?
I'm gonna ask you to stop at this point. It has nothing to do with any of the articles on the warrant in the town meeting this evening. Again, if you want to go to a board meeting, you're more than welcome to go to a board meeting.
You better call a cop, because I'm not gonna shut up. I'm telling you right now.
There's one right there for you.
I'm not leaving. I have a right to be here.
I know you do, but you're on the order of this meeting, so you can't talk about what, anything other than what's on the warrant. Is that what they're trying to do?
That's absurd!
Sir, that is the rules.
I don't make them. That's what we have to follow them. But there is a, there is a place where you can get exactly what you're asking for. It's probably next week at a select board meeting.
Well, we're always people involved in the decisions.
Well, they're involved in the warrant, but they're not involved in the water issue.
Well, assuming we can talk about money, how about water?
No, those are the rules. They can't talk about that right now, but they can talk about it, just not tonight. So you can get the questions answered.
Tell me when, when you're gonna talk about the water then. Who makes that decision?
We could schedule a meeting. You could come meet with me in my office.
You?
You could come meet with me in my office. Do you want to schedule?
No, you can come to my house and talk to me. Who the hell do you think you are?
We're trying to help you.
You're an employee of all the people here. That's it.
He's gonna talk to you. I promise. He's coming to, I promise. I'll come with you. Okay. All right. All right. Okay, let's get through this, okay? All right, thank you.
Okay, so any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Six? Seeing none. Article Six requires a simple majority to pass. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed. And Article Six passes by majority. Article Seven.
I move to dismiss Article Seven.
Second.
By explanation, the State Department of Revenue has advised that because they were received during the current fiscal year, these funds must first close to free cash at year end prior to being appropriated. The town will bring back this article back to town meeting once that has occurred.
Select Board recommend the dismissal?
Select Board recommends.
And Finance Committee?
The dismissal specifically? We didn't vote on the dismissal, we voted on the article.
So, we need to vote on the dismissal, though. So, all those in favor of the dismissal of this particular article at this time, please raise your orange card. It's again a simple majority. It'll be brought back up in the spring or when necessary. All of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Seven is dismissed. Article by majority. Article Eight.
I move that the town vote to act upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to amend the fiscal year 2023 community preservation budget to appropriate funds for additional debt service in the amount of $69,948 by transfer from the fiscal year 2023 annual budgeted reserve.
Second.
By way of explanation, the community preservation budget requires additional funds for debt service related to the town hall restoration project, which was bonded in June 2022, subsequent to the annual town meeting. The fiscal year 2023 annual budgeted reserve is a line item within the existing budget established for this purpose.
Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Community Preservation Committee? Is there a representative?
I don't know. I don't think they did recommend.
I'm sorry?
They did recommend.
Yeah, they did recommend. No representative? Okay. Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article Eight? Seeing none. Article Eight requires a simple majority to pass. All of those in favor of Article Eight passing, please raise your orange cards, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. Article Eight passes by majority. Article Nine.
Article Nine. I move that the town vote to change the use to be available for disposition and further authorize the select board to convey the property located at 360 Washington Street, Assessor's Map 23U, Lot 3A, for such consideration as the select board deemed to be in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Explanation, 360 Washington Street is currently the site of the Moreau Hall Elementary School. On August 25, 2022, the Easton School Committee voted to transfer the care and custody of Moreau Hall to the select board upon occupancy of the Blanch A Ames Elementary School anticipated for January 2023. When the new Blanch A Ames Elementary School opens in 2023, Moreau Hall will no longer function as a public school, and the town does not have other purpose to own and maintain the facility after that point. This article would authorize the select board to dispose of the property land using a public procurement process to solicit bids or proposals. Given the historic significance of Moreau Hall, the board intends to limit proposals to those which prioritize the preservation of the exterior structure of the hall and which would be in keeping with its previous purposes as a site for education and/or promotion of civic and communal engagement. While disposition of the property is subject to the procurement process, as part of the town's ongoing facility planning process, Stonehill College has indicated they intend to bid on such a process, and that the college would consider a lease of land they own at Daley's Corner, Washington Street and Main Street, for construction of a new Easton Fire Station. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Nine?
Bill Donahue, 45 Forest Edge Road. Can you explain how the designation as a historical preservation is going to impact the potential sales price, as well as why there wasn't also provision to convert it from municipal to residential zoning?
So as part of the disposition process, we have to first receive authorization from town meeting before the board can issue a request for proposals or bids. Before those requests go out, we need to bring an appraiser in to do an appraisal of a property that would do all that due diligence and net those things out to the extent there is any impact. And, I'm sorry, what was the second question?
So, you, there's a historical preservation attached to it, which likely will impact the ultimate sale value of the property. So, did it, you know, I'm wondering why, because it likely will result in a lower sales price than not attaching a historical preservation clause to it.
We're not attaching a historic preservation clause to it at this time. I don't, are you referring to a previous one?
No, they're, in the warrant, I believe, there's a reference to designating the property as historical preservation.
I apologize if that wasn't clear. That's just, that was more intended to convey that because it is a significant property, that the board would intend to limit bids that they would consider for certain uses. Not, it's not conveying, and counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, it's not conveying any kind of specific historic preservation restriction.
Okay. So what happens then if bids come in that are higher than what Stonehill is bidding? What would the selectmen do in those cases?
Well, I can't speculate. This would...
I think it's important for us to know, because we're giving you the right to sell the property. We need to know what happens if there's bids that come in that are higher than what you intend to sell the property at Stonehill for.
As part of the procurement process, any town needs to establish criteria that it uses to basically grade and rank the relative merit of proposals, and we would do that on the front end, and that would be shared publicly as that was going out. So everyone here, including any prospective bidders, would understand where reuse potential versus price falls into the select board's thinking as far as a relative value. There's no guarantee that it gets sold to any one property, any one bidder. If the board feels that the proposals, for some reason, are not in keeping with the spirit of what they've requested through the bid process, or if they think for any other reason it's not the interest of a town to sell at that time, they have no obligation to do so.
So, just repeat what you said, then. So in theory, you could accept a lower price if you wanted to sell it to, let's say, Stonehill for example, versus some other third party coming in?
Again, I'm not going to speculate on hypotheticals. We need to, on the front end, make clear for the sake of fair competition, right? It would not be, this has to be an open bid process, and we have to lay out for anyone who's going to go through the due diligence and the time and expense to craft a proposal that everyone is on the same footing and understands where the select board's relative priorities are for what they bid on. I can't say what that would be without having specifics in front of us. The board would reserve the right to reject proposals they think are not in the town's interest, or not award any at all. But we have to make clear what those criteria are, both non-price and price, as well as what's called a rule for award, which makes it clear to any reasonable person bidding so that they can try to be competitive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Posolo, 15 Jenny Lynn Street. I just have concern that why is something about the fire department, you know, land for fire, involved in this discussion? Like, if they're gonna be moving, I mean, selling Moreau Hall back to Stonehill College, I see you're probably discussing it because of sharing of land or, you know, getting the land or whatever. But what, why is the fire, a new fire station discussed with this selling of the property?
So it's a good question.
It seems like it's ambiguous. I mean, you're doing two things...
Well, we wanted to just be transparent. We have different planning processes going on. So the town back in 2019 voted both here and at referendums to move the PK to two, to the Blanch A Ames Elementary, and that those schools, Stonehill, Moreau, Parkview, would no longer be used as schools. Concurrent with the construction of the new school, the Municipal Building Committee has been working on feasibility phase planning for police, fire, and public works. Those are not directly on the warrant, but we just felt it was the right thing to acknowledge that those discussions had happened, that as part of the feasibility process where you bring in a design team, particularly for fire stations, the location of a station has a big impact on service delivery, response times, looking at land throughout the town that could be feasible for a fire station. And so, this article acknowledges that Stonehill has expressed interest, but it's, there's no, this isn't a direct sale. We can't do a direct sale. It just lays out that they're interested, they've expressed that interest, and then we would have to do the process.
I just feel like, you know, I think we should just discuss Moreau Hall and stay out of the fire department issue right now, honestly.
So this authorization would be for the board to go through the process of selling Moreau Hall. Whether Stonehill bids or other people bid would be subject to what we received at that time.
Go ahead.
Hi, Anne Grant, 43 Wannover Road. I'm just curious if this language about intends to limit the proposals is binding, or if the board could change what it intends after this passes? Like, right now, it's saying it intends to limit it to historic preservation of the exterior, but if we pass this, can they change that intention?
So, the motion is for the interest of the town. They could, although it would not be advisable. I don't want to speak for my bosses without asking them and get myself in trouble, but I don't think they would come before all of you, say, "This is our intent to do this," and then do a 180 on it, particularly where the sale documents, the invitations for bids themselves, are going to be drafted by my office and reviewed by a board, by the board at a public meeting, and they'll vote on that before they even go out. So technically, yes. I don't think it would be a wise choice for them or myself to do that.
So is there another later meeting where the public would get to vote again if the intention changed, or is this the moment when we give that power to the board to make it, you know, without bids?
So, it would depend. I'm gonna invite the chair to speak to that, but if, so this gives a certain level of flexibility, which is important, so that we could craft a bid for what we're telling you right now we would intend it for. This gives the board the ability that if we do that, and for some reason, market forces something outside of our control, the bids come back in a way that we don't like, or we get no responses, they have some flexibility. I think that it would be the board's intent that if they were going to wholesale change what it would be, that we would come back. Is that...
Yes, and we've had numerous public meetings where we've talked about this at select board meetings, so we don't want people to think this is like a brand-new idea coming out, and we try to be very transparent in all that we do. So if there was a material change to that, that was something big, we would certainly bring it back before the public again. It wouldn't be something that would be a surprise, and the select board has indicated at all these other meetings that that is our intent.
Sharon Gibson, 185 Lincoln Street. I apologize if this was discussed at a select board meeting, but in the article, it says that the town does not have other purpose for the building. Can you discuss what... Can you discuss what else was considered and why it was ultimately discarded as an
Sure, thank you. So we have a committee, it's called the Municipal Building Committee, and I think some of them may be in the room. It is as much fun as it sounds. They provide citizen oversight for myself, the DPW Director, other staff, who, by charter, the town administration is responsible for managing the town's land, but there's checks and balances. And the Municipal Building Committee is one of them. Any public building project over a certain dollar amount, they are involved in with the procurement of design, construction, things of that nature. So the determination that these schools didn't serve the educational purpose was made in 2019 when we moved through that process, and then we had the, the separate concurrent process for feasibility for municipal buildings, which was funded by Town Meeting last November, where we went through that process. We've met dozens of times, particularly through summer, with a design team, looking at, could this site, which we already own, serve a purpose, serve a new life, perhaps as police, fire, or public works? And it was knocked out of contention for a variety of reasons, including that it's limited in size. It, it seems quite large, but when you're looking at a modern police, fire, DPW facility, you're looking at 10-plus acres. This is three and change. The historic namesake and its location, so it is abutted by Stonehill College Cemetery House of Possibilities, so getting vehicles out onto 138 there could be tricky. Public Works couldn't fit, and folks in Easton are usually pretty sensitive to historic character of buildings, and we didn't think it was worth diving deeper after those site limitations were concluded with Public Works, Police and Fire, and the Building Committee on, you know, punching huge holes in it for apparatus or things like that.
Was it considered for any other purpose, such as council on aging, recreational space, youth, youth facility, anything like that?
So, yes, however, we were not in a place where retrofitting the interior, because that in and of itself could be a costly project, looks appealing compared to continuing with our capital repairs of Frothingham. As far as recreational facilities, this next item article is more related and goes down that road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Hurley, 111 Paquana Cat Avenue. So bear with me, this is my first Town Meeting, but when we walked in, you guys had mentioned something about, like, an amendment or a motion process. I think the point that there is some flexibility in the way this is written is concerning to me personally. Is this something that we could vote to amend to kind of align a little more narrowly with the historic preservation and the other priorities that you've listed? Is that how this works? You went through it really fast at the beginning.
So you're asking how to draw up an amendment? That's what you're asking?
Yes.
If you want to draw up an amendment, you have to write it out and present it?
Okay. And, and I'm sorry, bring it.
You have to write it out?
Okay.
You have to write out the amendment and present it. Bring it up in writing and present it.
Okay.
And then it has to be, it has to be voted on first before the actual article can be voted on.
Okay. I think I'm going to do that quickly, if, if that's okay. Right?
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
She can write it right on her mind if she wants an amendment right up.
You could write it right on the back of the...
She has to bring it up.
Or we have a, we have a blank one as well up here.
I actually have one. Here. I don't know if she's only making a word.
I'm sorry, you didn't see standing there. Go ahead.
Hi, Tracy Jakes, I'm at 67 Meeting House Lane, and I just wanted to ask quickly, I know it says Stonehill College has indicated and intend to bid, and that they would consider a lease of land. Would they consider, still consider the lease if they don't get the Moreau Hall property? Is this a concern? Are there other available lands in town where we could put the new fire station?
So I, I can't speak for Stonehill College as far as the second part of that, is there a concern? Yes, there's not, as I'm sure all of you know, there's not a ton of eight-to-10-acre buildable, not soaking-wet pieces of land in Easton. So this was identified as part of that because of its location, because it's in the north part of town. If these things fall through and that doesn't work out, we'll just, we'll have to go back to the drawing board. By virtue of it being on the warrant, you know, Administration, Select Board, Building Committee, all of us think this is the right path, but if it falls through, well, it, it could delay that building project.
Thank you.
So one thing that I'd like to add is that these things have to be done at a Town Meeting, and we only have Town Meeting twice a year, so we're thinking about, you know, a real missed opportunity if this is not voted on tonight affirmatively, and things change, market conditions change. That's why we want that article to have some flexibility. It's not going to be something that is going to turn out completely different than we've represented to everybody in this room and people on TV that have watched our meetings. But we do have to have some flexibility, because if it gets too tight of, of language on there, and we miss the opportunity to negotiate, we won't be able to come back again for six months, and that might limit things as well. So that's, that's why we try to keep some flexibility on these.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Donna Rando, Purchase Street. I have a question as to why we would lease land versus finding a piece of property for these fire, police, and on DPW.
That's a good question. So the majority of that building project is looking at land the town owns outright on Depot Street, which is good, because obviously having total ownership and control is preferable, all other things being held equal. Again, without speaking for Stonehill, let's make it a hypothetical with me and you, and I have a really, really large front yard, and I'm not using the overwhelming majority of it. And you have an idea for a business type on that yard that I'm okay with, but if I sell you the land, you could then do whatever you want with it, and you or I lose any control there. So you can do leases, many, many decade-long leases with renewal provisions provided use remains the same, that protect both parties. So that is why, in some cases, people who own land of that size may want a multi-decade lease with renewals provided the use remains the same, because once somebody sells a property, then they have no ability to influence that.
I agree there, but wouldn't it, the lease wind up costing each and every one of us more than purchasing property outright?
Not necessarily, and it, we will, again, we're getting kind of into hypotheticals on what a private entity may bid, but any multi-year lease agreement needs to come to Town Meeting. So hopefully, if this is successful tonight, we'll have the particulars for you in May, and if Town Meeting finds them to be problematic, you could vote no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, Sarah Morrison, 31 Beaver Dam. I am wondering if there are any other entities or organizations that the town is aware of that have expressed interest in the property beyond Stonehill College?
I, I'm not personally aware, but that's part of why we have to go through this process to publish it widely. It has to go in a state central database for redevelopment and sale of public land so that there's that fair footing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's someone in line.
I'll defer to him.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Who's, who's going?
Go ahead.
Meredith Keach, 11 Old Foundry. Just while we have a minute, question about negotiations if, and this is hypothetical, so I know that this is not an absolute, just a question if, if we were to negotiate with Stonehill, could we possibly, if Stonehill wanted to purchase the property, again, this is all hypotheticals, if that were a possibility, can we negotiate use?
Well, you would restrict, you can restrict reuse through the actual invitation for bid itself on the front end. So the Board, if Town Meeting authorizes this, the Board would need to set a set of standards in that request for proposals that lays out the types of uses that they would like to see, and then if somebody comes in and proposes a McDonald's, it doesn't even make its way to the Board, I put it in the trash, because it's considered non-responsive. So you can tailor that on the front end.
And using the Stonehill example, they, I guess this would, this would assume a deed restriction, but we could theoretically sell, using the Stonehill as an example, with a restriction of some type of use, possibly?
I don't know, and at the risk of getting into speculation of a possible real estate transaction, I, I think, Kate, we could restrict through the invitation for bid the uses we would like to see, and would that turn into a deed restriction after the purchase and sale?
Yeah, to the extent that the Board felt it appropriate to place a historic restriction on, or a restriction on the development of the property, which would be recorded, just like a deed would be recorded, it's within that deed, and it would run with the land, and so, meaning continue on into perpetuity.
Got it. Thank you.
Cool.
Is any of the money that's being appropriated tonight going toward the problem we have with the water?
So again, we're, we're not talking about the water this evening? We're not talking about the water right now. We're, we're on...
So none of the money that's appropriated tonight is toward the water problem, correct?
We're not talking about it at all tonight.
The water budget right now, in this current year, is spending money fixing that.
It's what?
Spending money fixing that problem right now in the water budget this year. We're working on it right now.
Okay, and does that include the water treatment plants?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
That's what I was concerned about.
Very good.
Okay. Someone else?
Sharon Gibson, 185 Lincoln Street. Just as a follow-up to your point on the Select Board, if this does not pass tonight, what is the plan for that property?
There will be no plan. It just will sit. Okay, are you ready with the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, you, you need to get to a microphone so we can all hear you. And again, I'm sorry, but you're just going to have to say name and, and address again.
Okay, it's Lisa Hurley, 111 Paquana Cat Avenue, and I am making a motion to amend by striking the language for such consideration as the Select Board deems to be in the best interest of the town, or take any other relative action thereto, and replacing it as follows: for such consideration as is deemed acceptable by the Board, and limited to those proposals that prioritize the preservation of the exterior structure of the hall, and which be, would be in keeping with its previous purposes as a site for education and/or promotion of civic and communal engagement.
Thank you. Can you just bring it up here to us?
So she needs a second?
She made the motion, there needs to be a second.
Second.
Okay, so the way this works is now we have an amendment to the, to the original motion, which we have to vote on. We have a motion, we have a second, okay? So the amendment has to be voted on. All of those in favor of the amended motion, you raise your orange cards, and this is a simple majority vote, okay? So all...
Can you read it?
Do you want it, want it to be read again?
It's a straight thing.
Okay.
I can read it, too. It's on here. They want it to be read again from the beginning, the entire thing. Do you want me to do it? Can you read it? I can read it if you can. It'd be easier if it was from here. Okay.
It's right, it's right here.
That's okay.
It's right. I'll try. So it stopped, it starts at, no, no, it's, it's in the motion. Yep, I know, but she pulled the language for her amendment from here, but it stops at...
It stops at lot 3A, right? It starts there.
Yeah.
Okay. Oops, sorry.
Right? Yes.
Okay. And limited to those proposals that prioritize the preservation of the exterior structure of the hall, and which would be in keeping with its previous purposes as a site for education and/or promotion of...
Civic and community.
Civic and community engagement.
I can hear right from this one down here. Thank you.
That's how it's, that's how it's read. Okay? So before anybody speaks about it, we need to vote on it, because it's already been moved, seconded.
First, you move the amendment?
What?
They can have discussion on it.
Okay, so yes, you can debate this part, this amended motion can be up for debate, this amended motion.
I have a point of order.
Go ahead.
Dale Carister, 21 South Street. Are we being asked simply to vote on whether to amend?
Yes.
Yes.
The article itself, we're not actually being asked to approve the amended article, am I correct?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
You're being asked to amend the article with this motion, not to approve the article itself. Any debate on this amendment?
Yes.
I think you are next.
If, if I could make a motion to amend the amendment to add the word "select" before "board"?
Well, first of all, I need your name and...
Oh, sorry. Erin Waluka, 31 R Paquana Cat Ave.
Waluka? Waluka. Ask her if she'll just take a friendly amendment. It doesn't change the subject, the substance. So ask her if she'll just take a friendly amendment.
The word "select" was left out of "Select Board" in the amendment.
Okay. And so you're asking for the word "select" to be put before "board"? So I'm just going to ask the original scribe of the amendment, Lisa Hurley, if you would take a friendly amendment to that and just add the word "select". So it's "Select Board". That's what you're asking, Mr. Waluka, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question for the amender.
He's just now amended.
I'm having a real difficult time finding out what you changed. It's, just seems to me you just said the same thing, but in a different way.
No, what I, what the intent of the amendment is to do is to not leave broad discretion with the Board to deem what is in the best interest of the town. You have represented here tonight that you guys are intending to prioritize the preservation of the historic hall, and you intend to keep certain uses, and what my amendment does is says that is a priority to me personally and anyone else that votes for the amendment, and that's what we want to see Moreau Hall, Moreau Hall used for. So I deleted the general language that says the best interest of the town and gives you wide latitude to change your mind, fully appreciating that no one intends for that to happen. I do understand that, I do, but what, what I wanted to see is a stronger commitment in the article to these uses. Did that answer your question?
L-U-K-A.
Sir? Yeah?
It did.
Thank you.
Okay. Jane?
Jane Martin, 50 Main Street. My only, not my only, my major concern about this proposed amendment is that it, we really want to provide the Select Board with as much flexibility as possible as we look to dispose of this property. For anybody who has been around for the last...
My only, not my only, my major concern about this proposed amendment is that it, we really want to provide the Select Board with as much flexibility as possible as we look to dispose of this property. For anybody who has been around for the last three or four years, you will recall that when we were investigating and working with the MSBA to do a new early elementary school, the cost to renovate Moreau Hall was exorbitant, which was part of the reason that we went down another path. And I am afraid that by restricting the flexibility that we want to give to the Select Board, that we are going to really limit any future opportunity for that site.
So, I just want to add to that concern. The intent here, there is obviously broad latitude provided to the Board to determine what they deem to be public interest that's entirely compatible with their job and what they're elected to do every day. The concern that I would have and that the Board has with not having some latitude is that if we have an overly restrictive authorization and things don't work out, the town is continuing to spend money to heat an empty building, to insure an empty building, to maintain the grounds of a vacated property out of the same budgets that are already strapped to maintain, including brand-new buildings. So we would be diverting resource, but if we end up holding on to this longer than we want to in an environment where interest rates are rising on a monthly basis, which could make the pro forma for anyone trying to bid less and less attractive over time, it would not be ideal to have such a narrow authorization with those factors there. We will be continuing to spend money maintaining these properties, insuring these properties, having a liability if they become an attractive nuisance and those kind of things. So I just think it's important that that context is understood when we're seeking that level of discretion. Thank you.
Anne Grant, 43 Gwinnevere Road. I think I appreciate what you're saying in response to the amendment, except that when I asked if the language limited the Board's control, you know, what it could put request in its bid, the answer was, we wouldn't, we probably wouldn't change it because that would be bad for all of us on this Board, and we would definitely come back before the town, et cetera. So what that sounds like is, you would put out a request for bids that would do this historic thing, and then it sounded like what you wanted to do is if that changed, because you couldn't succeed in selling the property, you would come back and ask us, you know, the people of Easton, to let you change what the bid is. What Ms. Hurley's amendment does is require you to do just that, because it limits the, the request for bids to historic, and then if that doesn't succeed in six months, presumably you could come back to us and say, "Look, we did put it out with the historic restriction, and no one was interested or was prohibitively expensive." So can you explain that?
I appreciate that, and we're certainly not trying to be opaque here, but this isn't just historic, this is extremely specific. Historic, exterior, education, promotion of civic or communal uses. And so I believe what I answered earlier was that if it was substantially different than that, the Board could come back. If it was similar, but just slightly broader than that, perhaps it's still institutional uses, maybe it's a business use that under our zoning is comparable to those institutional uses, the Board would have flexibility. But it's somewhat subjective. So I'm certainly not trying to communicate that if this bid crafted this way fails to be productive, that under every circumstance, the Board would come back. The Board could issue an identical bid, we would not be coming back. The Board could issue one that's similar but not identical, and if, that would be a decision for the Board to make on if they feel it would need to come back. If we were going to do a complete reversal and have some kind of heavy industrial or commercial use, the Board would be coming back.
Right, but you're not limited to doing that.
No, we're not.
The, the language of this proposal gives you the power to do a 180. I, I understand-
It does.
And I totally believe that you have no intention to do that, but it sounds like this is our opportunity to limit the amount of discretion the Board has as the people of Easton, with the understanding that you could come back in six months and say, "Hey, it didn't work." And, or maybe the language could be further amended to add this institutional use suggestion you're talking about. But what I'm worried about is the discretion that's as written before the amendment is anything, you know, up to residential, I don't, maybe proper, maybe not, but-
Well, with this item in particular, we would need to come back to town meeting to rezone as appropriate for whatever the proposals are, so town meeting would be weighing in there. But yes, you are correct, and that's a decision folks are gonna vote on shortly. There's a balancing act between discretion and the ability to act and be efficient and significant restrictions. And so all I'm trying to do in my responsibility to all of you is make clear that in my professional opinion, restricting it much more narrowly on the front end does not come without risk. That's all.
I understand that. Maybe you can speak to why the six, then there's, there very well could be a good reason for this, so this is what I'm hoping for clarification on, why the six months is so significant. I mean, it sounds like you have one proposal in mind, even though you're gonna open it to everybody, but, you know, as a layperson, I'm not in real estate, right? Six months doesn't sound like a super-long period of time, it's also over winter, right? So I'm not really sure why the same people wouldn't be interested six months from now who are hoping you change the mandate of this proposal.
So from my perspective, the concern with waiting six months or more to come back, right, we have two town meetings a year, is that interest rates are going up every month, right? So delaying by six months could have a material impact, depending on what the Fed does on the cost of capital for anyone doing any kind of major renovations, which could make or break a project. Development is extraordinarily expensive right now, anyone who's had to buy a home or renovate a home understands that. Construction prices are theoretically stabilizing supposedly, depending on what article you read on what day, but that's a very volatile situation as well. So our perspective is, there's already some economic headwinds starting to blow in a direction that may not be favorable to real estate transactions, and we don't want to find ourselves here in May, asking and having the same discussion, and then go out to bid and lose that opportunity. Of course, we're speculating, it might all be fine.
I mean, last thing I'll say in response to that is it could also go down, right? None of us can predict what would happen with the interest rates going forward, so. But, thank you, I'll, I'll leave it there.
Andrew Fleischer, 62 Gaslight Lane. I move to question.
Was that, you were gonna call a question as well? Or not?
I made a motion to question, so we have to vote on that first.
I need a second, I'm sorry. Yeah, I can accept it, I'm sorry. Somebody second the motion? Okay, so now, we have to vote on calling the question. All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your orange card, it's a two-thirds vote required. And all those opposed. All of those opposed to calling the question, please raise your orange card. Okay, all right, so we are moving- We have, it's more than a two-thirds majority. So now, we are going to vote on the amendment, okay? Everybody's clear on that? We're voting on the amended motion, whether or not we're going to accept that amended motion, not on whether or not we're gonna pass Article 9, but just on the motion as it's amended, okay? So, we need a majority vote if, on, on this in order for it to pass the amended motion. All of those in favor of amending the motion to the amendment that Ms. Hurley made, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed to amending, please raise your orange card. Okay, so the amendment fails. Okay, so we're back to the motion and the Article 9 as the original motion. I assume we're all set with comments, questions, concerns on the original Article 9, the original motion? So, all of those in favor of Article 9 passing, the original motion, we need a two-thirds majority vote, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed to amending, please raise your orange card. Okay, so the amendment fails. Okay, so we're back to the motion and the Article 9 as the original motion. I assume we're all set with comments, questions, concerns on the original Article 9, the original motion? So, all of those in favor of Article 9 passing, the original motion, we need a two-thirds majority vote, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article 9 passes with a two-thirds majority vote. Article 10.
I move that the town vote to change the use to be available for disposition and further to authorize the Select Board to convey the property located at 388 Depot Street, a Sezres Map 38U, Lot 17, for such consideration as the Select Board deemed to be in the best interest of the town. By way of explanation, 388 Depot Street is currently the site of the Center School. On August 25th, 2022, the Easton School Committee voted to transfer the care and custody of the Center School to the Select Board of Easton upon occupancy of the Blanch A. Ames Elementary School. When the new Blanch A. Ames Elementary School opens in 2023, the school will be decommissioned. The Town's Municipal Building Committee did explore potential municipal reuse of the Center School site for a future police, fire, and/or public works facility as part of the Town's ongoing facilities planning efforts, but concluded that other town-owned land on 524 Depot Street, 10 acres purchased with general bonds following approval by town meeting for the same in 2014, was more advantageous. Therefore, the Town does not have other purpose to own and maintain the Center School after it is vacated as a public school. This article would authorize the Select Board to dispose of the property and land using a public procurement process to solicit bids or proposals. The Planning and Zoning Board is recommending reverting the zoning on this property to residential, see Article 11 immediately following this article, which is consistent with the surrounding parcels and neighborhood, and would allow for either residential use or community center recreational facilities by special permit. While residential use would be allowable under said zoning, the Select Board intends to solicit proposals, including community recreational facilities, which also prioritize the preservation of Yardley Rink to the fullest extent possible, feasible. While disposition of the property is subject to the procurement process, the Old Colony YMCA has indicated that they may wish to propose a recreational facility on the site. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 10?
Alexandra Warnke, Blackbrook Road. Point of information, how much did the town spend in 2014 on the 10 acres on Depot Street that is under consideration for the municipal building?
I don't have the exact figure, but the purchase of the entire property in question was roughly $5 million, and this was about 1/10th.
Okay, and also, given Connor, given your glowing recommendation for the benefits of leasing part of, of plot of land rather than selling it if you want to be able to control and restrict, what has been done by the committees to look into leasing the Center School site rather than selling it?
I, I take some ombreage with the suggestion I gave of glowing recommendation one way or another. I tried to give information regarding a hypothetical where different parties may have different priorities for land transactions, but to answer the question, we don't want to be landlords. The Town does not want to be in the business of renting and maintaining the liability of having renters and folks on our property.
Given the considerable amount of town support and the fact that this is so centrally located and that we've had a lot of recreation use, there's a lot of people that, ever, a lot of people know that the rink that is there is used all winter long, from kids young all the way to older folks out there just sitting enjoying the area, has, have any steps been made to try to divide the lot into two different separate parcels of land, one with the rink and some of the parking, and one with the school building?
We've looked into it. I, we do not think that that's advantageous for a few reasons. If the goal is to find a new owner for this, what is a 13-acre parcel, and you start subdividing and carving out parking right out of the gate, you could potentially defeat the entire purpose of trying to sell it and end up harming Yardley Rink and the process. If you carve Yardleywood Rink off too narrowly, it becomes somewhat of an orphan parcel that probably is non-conforming with zoning and then would not have necessarily parking access. Depending on where you delineated that, the new owners could, not that I think somebody would, but they could not allow public parking there and turn that into an issue. And so that's why in the article and in all the discussions we've had about this publicly, as well as the statements of the Y who's indicated they may be interested, we will be issuing requests for proposals and bids that make clear on the front end that we want to see proposals that would preserve access to Yardley Rink for the public.
Now, when you say that it's to preserve access to the public, you've mentioned something about they could prohibit publicly parking there if they, when you said if you split it up. Now, with proposals that you're looking to get, what assurances are there that this will remain free and open to the public, not something like a paid service that the Y provides for school care or for their Y members?
So, there's a couple of pieces there on the back end, I'll ask council to fill in for me, but again, on the front end, we would be able to craft and define what responsive proposals look like. And if the Board issues a set of criteria that says must provide for continued public access and use without fees to Yardley Rink, and somebody bid and had something contrary to that, it would be considered non-responsive and wouldn't be awarded under that. And then as far as moving forward in perpetuity, I would imagine it would be a similar discussion of potential deed restrictions or other things like that that would-
Yeah, sure, to the extent that the Board wanted to designate that area for public use, just like in certain other subdivisions, you set aside portions for open space, you could set aside a portion of that for recreational use.
It was made very clear the Board was not interested in being more restrictive with the wording for the sale of the Moreau Hall property. Would the Board be supportive of more restrictive wording for this article? I think that's very telling.
I think, I think you were next.
Denise Higgins, 4 New Pond Way. My original intent was to get up here for the next article on the zoning, but it appears to me that it's more important to get up for this article. My intention is to bring to our attention that this is a very strategic piece of land in the town. I don't think I need to tell people much about it, but the visibility, the location, the traffic, the Yardley Rink, the level of land, the parking, the fact that we spent an awful lot of money just doing some redesign to the street in front of it and the, the monument. We don't have a lot of municipal pieces of land that are as strategic as this. I think that what I'd like to see is that we put a speed bump on this one particular piece of municipal property. I don't, and I've talked to several people that I can see here and some are not represented here, that there was too little participation by the townsfolk about what they might like to see there as a future use. I was not aware of any meetings where they have conducted any debate or interest for the people to come forward to say, you know, "Hey, these are some great ideas we might have that we'd like to do and, and we'd like to see there." What I have heard is there's some rumors, and what I don't like to hear is I don't like to hear rumors. What I'd like to do is, is to hear some transparency about what really would like to, what we'd really like to have there. If there is in fact the intention for the Y to be there, and we go to the next article and we vote to rezone that, it is now rezoned in, in residential and perpetuity. That is now a decision that we've made, we've taken it out of municipal, and now we have no longer have the control to do what we choose to do. So I urge some of you to think about that clearly because we're giving up a right here. And, and is there really, is there really an awful lot of, of intense need for us to dispose of this one piece of property that is really, really important? It's got some great visibility, great visibility for people that are traveling through the town, and it served now with the, the monument to kind of being somewhat of a stopping spot, maybe a place of reflection. So, please do consider this. I, I don't want to table anything, but maybe we can put a speed bump here and maybe just wait on this one particular article. Thank you.
Go ahead, she, oh, okay. Whoever.
Sarah Morrison, 31 Beaver Dam. I appreciate what Ms. Higgins has just said and echo that. My concern is that the space is not going to be preserved- Sarah Morrison, 31 Beaver Dam. I appreciate what Ms. Higgins has just said and echo that. My concern is that the space is not going to be preserved for generations to come. I'm even concerned about the fate of the rink for this coming season, winter season. It is an incredible community space for us, and my feeling is that community recreation space over residential building space would really add to the community value for years to come and not line the pockets of somebody who might make a lot of money off of residential buildings and putting up more houses or perhaps preserve some tax basis for the town. But really, when you think about it, towns like Randolph have an intergenerational community center. Easton is completely lacking in that space. Our recreation department offers little in the way of summer programming. Programming for youth year-round is miniscule. Not all of us can afford our children to attend Maplewood, but yet we're working full-time to make sure we can pay our taxes. So I think it's really important that we, like Denise said, put a speed bump in this and really think together as a town about preserving this centrally-located space and the yardly wood rink for generations to come to add values to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to make clear that with both your comments and Ms. Higgins, we agree with you. We agree this is an incredible piece of land in a really great location, but a lot of energy and time and money has been invested in improving the transportation access, too. As far as public engagement, when looking at this after the voters decided to no longer use this as a school, we polled from existing community-driven plans, the Master Plan and Vision Easton, the Recreation and Open Space Plan. And in those documents, which did have really robust processes, we heard a lot of the same feedback that, again, we agree with, that there is a lack of recreational facilities, that there was a desire to see more programming offered throughout the community, but that was agnostic to the provider, right? And actually, some of those documents specifically went out of their way to encourage the town leadership to find other methods and ways where we could create recreational opportunities for folks, including ones we're not directed providing ourselves, because building something of this size ourself would be extraordinarily expensive. We'd be coming to you to do it. Hiring the staff to run it would be cost-effective due to our size. And so we look to those community-informed plans, as well as the very salient points you've made about its critical location. As far as the zoning, this zoning is residential that we're proposing the next article, but that allows for this use. And generally, you try not to do what's called spot zoning and have one piece of land surrounded. Everything around this is residential, and so this is a type of zoning that would allow for recreational and community centers. So we agree, we would love to see more recreational facilities and resources. We think the best way to go about that is to try to sell a piece of property we no longer have use for and the ability to maintain, certainly as a school or for our own use, to a private developer to put a recreational or community facility for all the same reasons you've identified.
My son is the Eagle Scout. Oh, Karen Tucker, 226 Turnpike Street. My son was the one that refurbished the rink, and it is the only legacy left in this town that he has. He passed eight years ago over and coming back from Afghanistan, so we're Gold Star family. But be that as it may, don't we have money in this town that is made, left, put aside to buy property? I mean, I know you bought a ton of property down on 138 to make it natural resources. Could we not purchase the land ourselves and use it for recreational purposes? A new football field, a new, well, you can get a football field, but soccer fields, tennis court, you already have a play area for kids, you've got the skating rink, you've got the parking lot, and you have a building that you can use for youth crafts and what-have-you, rainy day things, kind of like Maplewood. What is that money that we pay every year on our taxes for?
So that's a good question. We wouldn't need to purchase it. We own it currently, and most of those purchases would be for using CPA, Community Preservation Funds, for things of that nature. Even if we have this authorization, the field will be maintained, yardly rink will still have access while we go through this process. As far as reusing the building, again, that determination, a very exhaustive one with significant public input, was done looking at the school, and the determination was pretty close to unanimously made, that these buildings are not in the condition that they should be being used, frankly. And so to try to retrofit it for a new use on the public dime, rather than selling it for a private party to do that, would be incredibly costly. We do not have typically the capacity for that outside of a debt exclusion override to do a project of that scale. So it's a good question. There are just different approaches to trying to see the same thing happen, and what we're looking at is having a private party purchase the land and go through that to build. There's a variety of reasons why that could be more cost advantageous for private parties. We have to do prevailing wage, we have to do a lot of important but burdensome and slow procurement steps. We have to bring in project managers that drive the cost of projects up pretty substantially. And when we're already looking at new police, fire, public works from a horizon, we have, it is our collective view that we want to find as many ways as possible to improve the facilities and services you all enjoy here without going directly to you to ask you to pay for it.
Phil Donnie, 45 Forest Inter. As was referenced, we have very little usable land in our town that isn't underwater. This is one of the few areas that actually could be used for athletic facilities. We lost two soccer fields/football fields with the building of the new Ames Elementary School that have not been replaced. You can use CPA money to build fields on the existing Center School property. That needs to be considered. Our children deserve better than this. We can't just keep on selling all our usable land, converting it to residential. Where are our children going to play? Then we're going to have problems with the children not being occupied. You know, our children have, you know, really need to be invested, and we're not doing that as a town, and we need to do more in that regard. The same thing, you know, as far as like the yardly rink. It's one of the few places in our town where people don't have to spend money, you know, to buy a program. They can just put their skates on and go skating. Not many communities have that. We're potentially going to lose that because you're selling the land. That needs to be considered as well.
Dave Wallace, 52 Center Street. My question is, can CPA funds be used to remove the existing school?
No, I don't think so. No, I don't. It would have to be for some other type of redevelopment, so the CPA funds wouldn't be able to be used strictly for demo, if that makes sense.
Actually, could you expand on that? I think one of the reasons we explored this, and I know Meredith will know, I believe, and so would Greg, I believe CPA funds are restricted, and we cannot use them to build indoor recreation facilities as a matter of state law.
I'm not looking at building. I'm talking about just removing the existing school and leaving it municipal and open space. There's 13 acres there in the dead center of town. We're not making any more dry ground in this town, as you said, Connor. It's, we're a swamp town. It's like to give up 13 prime acres in the middle of this town is ridiculous. Keep it for 20, 30 years down the road, we don't know what we might need. I mean, you have a plan, but how far does your planning go out? This town is still growing. We're nearing buildout, but it's going into a tear-down town, and we're starting to grow that way.
So, again, this isn't, outside of the kind of land-holding perspective, right? You could make a policy decision to sit on it, but I want to be super clear again, and it's even more true with this property than Moreau Hall, this is a site that is, the building itself is in terrible condition.
Oh, I know that.
And we will need to continue. It's not a matter of sit on it and it costs us nothing. It will cost us every year.
But if we come to another town meeting and appropriate the funds to remove the building, then CPA funds could be used to put in a couple of fields, and then we'd only have to mow the lawn.
But for perspective, the estimates on abatement and removing this building, and I might lean on the DPW director to give me a layup here, are in excess of $700,000. So, please, if I may.
Yes.
For us, on a regular basis, our capital spend on all town and school capital investments outside of huge state projects, things like the Depot Street tip or major projects with special financing options like sewer betterments, we spend between $2 and $4 million on the capital for police, fire, public works, recreation, schools, everything. And so in my professional judgment, I would not want to see a substantial portion of the town's capital capacity going towards tearing a building down when we could possibly externalize that cost onto the private sector. So again, I just want, it's going to be up to town meeting. I just want to be clear that it's not as simple as just sit on it. It becomes an insurance liability issue, it becomes a building maintenance issue.
I'm well aware.
So, thank you.
And that's why you gave me a number, $700,000, even if it's $1 million to remove the building and the abatement. How much, if we need the land 10, 15, 20 years from now, are we going to pay for 10 acres, 13 acres of land for a future use for the town?
So the town has had pretty good land planning, I think. This body with the leadership's recommendation did purchase land eight years ago to hold on to for exactly this type of theoretical municipal reuse. So it's certainly not outside of things that we've done before, and we try to be very, very thoughtful about it. It's a balancing act of a relative benefit of holding on to it or not, and that's where we are.
I think it's short money to keep it. 13 acres for recreational property is what we need.
If I could add something, Madam Moderator? To, from a liability perspective, naturally, a dilapidated building where accessibility becomes an issue is a risk for the town. So where you have an uninhabited space, particularly that is accessible because of its age, it becomes a liability issue, and your insurance rates increase, you have to figure out fencing, and all of those things. I just wanted to make that one other point.
The building needs to be moved, but $700,000 for a million for a new building and have 13 prime flat level dry acres in this town is short money.
Under this zoning change, is it possible?
I need your name and address.
Oh, sorry, Mark Carpenter, 12 Adam. Under this zoning change, is it possible that this plot or pieces of this land could become apartments, affordable housing, condos?
The answer to the zoning question is no. Residential one zoning allows single-family homes on approximately an acre of land. This is even separating aside the discussion we've had tonight regarding the board making very clear publicly and in writing what its intent is, the zoning doesn't allow some kind of dense housing. And, you know, if you're thinking of some kind of 40B or something like that, the infrastructure is not there most likely. It was one of the reasons why this site was knocked out of contention for police, fire, public works, is it has no sewer, right? So it's inherently limited from an infrastructure perspective and from a zoning perspective, no, you can't have dense multi-unit housing.
So you're saying it's protected from 40B based on the way it's set up?
A 40B developer could make a proposal on any land anyone owns.
Exactly.
But that's no different than any other piece of land under any circumstance. It would be protected from an unfriendly 40B from the town's planning efforts to make sure we're in compliance with that law, which we are.
Well, we know what happens with 40B, but anyway. So down the road, there's nothing that says we couldn't keep the land, rezone it later, sell it later, right?
Correct. Outside of the financial risks, liability risks, and other opportunities we may miss that we then lose control over.
Okay, thank you.
Tristan Warnke, 17 Blackbrook Road. If you could see, I just came from hockey practice. I'm one of the coaches for one of the local teams. I also have the winter kind of job of helping take care of the rink. I'm one of a very small crew that makes sure that place gets shoveled, makes sure it gets watered, and makes sure kids have fun out there. The question I have just is, when this goes through, there's a lot of ifs and maybes, who gets final say? Like if, when this comes back around to we've made the request for proposal, does that come back to town meeting, or is this something the board will end up voting on? Or is this something, Connor, that you have veto power as the town administrator?
I have no power as a town administrator. It's my job to try to be helpful. The Select Board would have the authority to sell the land. It would be with them. Of course, it's my job to advise them and work with town council and attorneys to make sure we're trying to dot our i's and cross our t's, but the Select Board would have the authority to sell it. And I think as far as the more theoretical or policy discussion about how restrictive or not, that's a similar debate as the last article, and of course, if folks want to amend it and try to go for that, that's what you're right.
I'm just asking, because I think the fear has come down to this, that we pass it here, and it goes out of our hands as a community. I know each one of you on the Select Board is part of this community, and some of you I know better than others, but I grew up in the city. I grew up with rec centers. I grew up with way less green space than we have here, but way more places for kids to go. If your kid doesn't go out hiking, there's not a lot of places for them to be here other than up here at the schools. And the schools are busy, you know? I play basketball. You can only be outside on the outdoor courts some months of the year. You can almost never get a space on the indoor courts because it's always busy. There are things that, you know, football, if you've ever been out here on a Saturday or Sunday, this place is busy as can be. We need more green space. We need more rec center-type areas. And I, you know, I grew up in a big enough city out in the Midwest, we had lots of room, we had lots of things, we had budget for rec center. It's always struck me as being a little weird that as a town, we rely on private-public partnerships to take care of our green space. We run our races in August on a piece of land that's not owned by, and on track, that's not owned by the town, because that's just how it's done. We've had all these years. The big thing is just the worry that we've been using this piece of land for the betterment of kids for, what has it been, 50 years now, and that it's going to go away, and we're going to lose it, and our kids and their kids are going to lose out on it. And, you know, those of us who moved into this town, you know, I didn't grow up here, not a townie, but we came here because of what this town is, the great schools, the great open space, and hopefully places for our children. All right, thank you.
Hi, Sarah Morrison, 31 Beaver Dam Road. I apologize to anyone who is here enduring this and not interested in this, but I definitely am. I appreciate that the YMCA has a proposal here. I actually run a nonprofit out-of-school time program for the city of Quincy. I'm a private nonprofit, and I'm currently building a youth center in the community of Quincy. So I know this issue really, really well, and I'm not raising my child in Quincy, I'm raising my child here in Easton. So this is so important to me that this gets preserved for free for our community or for a low cost, because even the YMCA is unobtaining them for some families in this community. It is pay-to-play, so when you're talking about a space where you can play indoors in the wintertime, or even a rink that you can use, it will eventually become a paid space. There is liability on that rink. Town knows all too well. There's insurances that the YMCA is going to have to pay for, they're going to have to fund it, so they're going to have to fund the employees. So again, this is the concern, and I think if we look at 13 acres of usable recreation space in our community right now, and we lose this opportunity because we're concerned about $700,000 to break down a building that we have to maintain, we just spent $205,000 on a single snowplow for our sidewalks. $700,000 seems like a real bargain to me. I, I... The community preservation funding and things that are happening here, fences that are being preserved for $300,000, or the redevelopment of Swift Park that nobody could feasibly recreate in without the danger, with a child or a dog or whatever, without the danger of getting hit in 138 traffic, there's just some big short sights, I think, if we vote... There's just some big short sights, I think, if we vote in favor of this. My question right now, besides my soapbox that I'm standing on, my question right now is, what happens if we reject this proposal tonight? What happens next?
The property is decommissioned and it slowly degrades. So, I want to make clear that the choice is not get this authorization and we do a bid and maybe a private party puts a recreational facility, which, again, a lot of us are saying similar things. We're just talking about the way to get there. The choice is not authorize this and a private recreation facility becomes possible, or say no and a municipal one gets built. There are no plans for that. There are concerns about CPA aside, but Swift Park is an example. We agree, we would love sidewalks, which is why we're working on what can sometimes be a 15-year design process with the Department of Transportation, just like we did with Depot Street. We agree with the importance of long-term and strategic planning, and that's why we executed those agreements with DOT in 2010 to have this construction today. We've done the same on Foundry. So, we hear you, but I want it to be clear to folks in here to answer your question. The choice is not authorize a sale and perhaps a private recreation or community center is built versus the town builds one. It's authorize the sale and perhaps a private recreation or community center is built or the property degrades.
So, the town's only option right now of consideration is either to sell the property or accept bids for the sale of the property or to allow center school to degrade. There's no other plan?
No, there's no other plan. And there are citizen boards that reviewed this at more than a dozen meetings over the course of this year that looked at this for possible reuse. We have no interest in letting properties degrade, of course, but again, we went through an exhaustive community process when the decision was made to stop using these buildings and these properties as schools because of the condition that they're in, because it was no longer a good financial investment. You're throwing good money after bad to be trying to squeeze life out of some of these 70- and 80-year-old buildings. So, we would go back to the drawing board and try to come up with a plan.
That's what I was hoping to hear. Thank you.
There's a building at 417 Beaver Road, Southeastern. Why is it closed to the public? It's a...
Sir, again, this has nothing to do with the article that we're on. It has nothing to do with the article that we're on. And speaking of that, I think that, I think that we, if anybody has anything new to add, I think we've always covered a lot here with this article, and I've let a lot of people talk and talk. So, if anybody has anything new to add, I invite you to add something new, but I'm going to restrict anything that's repetitive. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add that we're talking about, one of the ideas of having fields or more things for our youth, I think, is a great idea. But I also want to remind people, and I'm not just saying this because I'm getting older, but we have a big older community that's also looking for places and areas to recreate as well. And I feel that the older people in our community have done a great job at supporting our youth with supporting a new school. And so, what we have in mind with this is to, you know, somebody said earlier, multi-generational. We want to be also looking at the age continuum of the most people that can use this, not just specifically for youth. So, just think of that.
I can, but not while doing this. We're in the middle of a...
Priscilla, oh, yeah. Is he finished?
Can I deserve an answer?
I'll answer you after.
Why is a public building closed to the public?
There's people in line.
So, there's people in line behind you talking about this article. There's people in line behind you talking about this article, not talking about what you're talking about. So, if you have something you want to direct to somebody after the meeting is over that has nothing to do with the warrant and any of the articles we're talking about, I'm sure that they will talk to you after the meeting is over. But we have four people, seven people standing in line right now. Go ahead, Meredith.
Meredith Keach, 11 Old Foundry. So, my question, somewhat to echo the sentiment of some of the folks here, certainly, I'm a volunteer in recreation, and that is what I think its highest and best use would be. My concern is if we were to sell the property, and this goes back to my question with...
Meredith, I'm sorry, can you just stop for one minute? Sir, sir, you're going to have to, sir, excuse me, you're going to have to be quiet because somebody is talking at the microphone and we can't hear them. Well, you're going to have to be quiet and listen. Go ahead, Meredith. Can you start over?
Sure, yeah. So, going back to my question with Moro Hall, my concern would be if we were to sell to the YMCA using the hypothetical, which I have to add a little color to that. So, I'm a volunteer board member for recreation. I'm not standing here in that capacity, but in Recreation Commission and on the Community Preservation Committee. I'm actually standing here as mom of three kids in the community. But, and I'm obviously an advocate for recreation. I have seen firsthand the ghastly cost to renovate. I was the lead on one of the projects for Ally's Park, and that was pre-lockdown, and the cost was mind-blowing at that point. Not to say that we shouldn't do it, but this is just to add a little color to the background that, yes, this is amazing land and we need more multi-use fields. I see it firsthand. A partnership would be magnificent. My only concern here with that is if we were to sell, and this goes back to my question with Moro Hall, if, let's say, in the example of the YMCA, financially, it doesn't work out for them, for whatever reason, and then they go to sell, do we lose control of that land forever? Because obviously, if we go to the possibility of selling to someone like the YMCA, there will be public involvement, I would hope, and I'm sure, because that's, I think that your board does an amazing job of that type of communication. But do we lose complete control? And I know, Connor, you indicated that it can, these types of lots, it's not, doesn't indicate for apartments or anything like that, but to echo everyone's sentiment here, we don't want to lose use of that recreation as recreation in this location.
Sure. Thank you. So, again, on the front end, we would, in the request for proposals, seek specific uses. And if somebody then came in and said, okay, I read that this says recreation or community space, but I'm proposing 13 townhouses, it would get thrown out as non-responsive. It wouldn't even be considered. As far as its continuing use or restrictions on it, again, I would look to council on whether or not there could be specific deed restrictions negotiated as part of a purchase and sale.
Sure. To the extent the board wished, you could have a restrictive covenant of any nature that would limit the use of the property in perpetuity.
So, if, let's say, the parcel was sold to, using a hypothetical, because it's not an absolute, but the YMCA, because it's mentioned here in the warrant, if the Y then decides to sell, we could put something in, in the purchase and sales agreement with the Y that ultimately becomes a deed restriction. So, if the Y, for example, were to fail, then it could revisit with the town so that it's not then going to have some different use where in the near future it goes for, let's say, some magnificent recreation facility, and then the recreation facility fails, and then it becomes some other use completely. We could restrict that in the future, sort of.
There are all kinds of creative ways. You could put a reversionary interest where it would revert back to the town, for example, just a restriction on the type of use, which would allow other entities that weren't the YMCA to develop in a similar fashion. So, there are several measures that you could take within the recorded documents that limit its use.
Thank you.
And I just, one other thing I want to add to that, that's a really good line of questioning, is part of those purchase and sale negotiations can also be setting deadlines for performance, right? So, if somebody bids, they purchase the land, they say, you know, this is our plan, our feasibility plan, and what we're going to do to redevelop it, and we're going to start construction in two years, or, you know, permitting contingent, and then six years go by and nothing's happening, we can put, and correct me if I'm wrong, clawbacks in there to revert it back to the town so that our interest is protected.
Correct.
Priscilla Almquist Olsen, 59 Seaver Street, Northeastern. I agree with Meredith in terms of putting a restrict, some kind of a restrictive covenant on the land, and I, the town attorney has mentioned a reversion clause, reverter clause, which I think is rather appropriate here for the building. My concern is, all these people who are here tonight are hoping that we might vote for something that maintains the recreational possibilities in the future. When we have 13 acres that the town owns, that is quite a gift for possible future recreational possibilities. So, my question really is, Connor, are you listening?
I'm being inspired.
My question is, why is it not possible to subdivide as many acres as is necessary for the recreational possibilities, whether there's soccer fields or, I don't know, since I went to school here at Oliver Ames, we only had football, basketball, and softball, and baseball, and field hockey. So, I know there are other fields which might be really appropriate now and in the future. But it seems to me that the majority of people here, the sentiment is, let's preserve this gift of 13 acres. We can subdivide off the building. We don't want to spend $700,000 to take it down. I mean, that's reasonable. And maybe the YMCA, if they have an interest, well, let them have the building, restrict that building to one acre, maybe, maybe less. Who knows? But I would suggest that that would be a good plan. And to put on a reversion clause, because Meredith's point is really good. If that facility fails, then the property, the building, can be reverted back to the town. I'm a retired lawyer. I think we have another one coming up right here with Dale. But really...
Still working.
But I think it's quite possible. And I think it would be in the interests of the select board to view the sentiments that are presented here tonight and to rethink this warrant so that we can have, so you can have what you want, sell that building, and yet preserve the majority of the 13 acres for future recreational possibilities. Thank you.
Dale Carister, 21 South Street. I'm also one of those folks, like many others, who have spoken tonight or one of the volunteers, you know, over the last four years who've been out shoveling and cutting the grass and using the weed whacker and so forth. And some of the folks who have spoken here tonight have also been out here late at night. And by the way, we had our first, you know, meeting this past Saturday to go over the planning for this coming year, so we're going to have everything taken care of again this year. I have also taken the lead over the last four years in having communications with the town about the rink. And through those communications, I can assure folks that the town officials have been very much recognized the value, what we have in the rink, it being another piece of Norman Rockwell here in Easton, and are very committed to preserving that going forward. I would also be very excited about the prospect of something like the Y or a similar recreational facility. I am one of those gray-haired folks who probably are not going to be out there playing football on some fields, but would love an opportunity to have something like the Y located in that section of town. So, I'm in favor of this article. Thank you.
Okay, so if anybody has anything new to add, I'll invite more comments. Anything new to add?
Yeah. I'm Gary Fraden, 72 Randall. Very briefly, it looks to me like this warrant is the authorization to put the land out for proposal. And I, for one, I love open space. I would love to see what the proposals are. I think that creative proposals that can include open space and other kinds of community use might be brilliant, and I would like to see them. That's why I think voting in favor of this would be a good idea. I'd like to move the question.
I'm sorry, so you called the question? Is that what you said at the end? Okay. So, we need to take a vote. I'm going to accept that calling of the question. We need to take a vote on closing the debate. I need a two-thirds majority vote if people want to close the debate. All of you, raise your orange cards to close the debate at this point. And if you're opposed to closing and want to keep chatting, please raise your orange card. Okay. So, closing the question, closing the debate passes by a two-thirds majority. So, now we're going to move to a vote on Article 10. All those in favor of Article 10 passing, we need a two-thirds majority vote on Article 10. All those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all those opposed to Article 10 passing. I can't, I can't understand. Okay, we're going to do that one again. Put your orange cards down. That's too close for me. All of those in favor of Article 10 passing, raise your orange card. I'm going to have to have, do you have somebody available to count?
Yeah, we'll make it one.
And all those opposed, please raise your orange card. All right, that's going to be too close for me to count. So, shut, so put your arms down. We're going to get some counters. So, just hang tight with us for a few minutes.
Stand if there are...
Yep. So, what we're going to do is we're going to start with all those in favor, but just give me one minute. We're going to get everybody together first. Okay. So, all those in favor of Article 10 passing, I need you to stand. So, if you're standing and you're not in favor, sit. Stand up so you don't have to keep your hands up, and we're going to have somebody come around and count. We know how many people are here. Well, I just remember votes.
Sit down. I would say... Are you wearing heels? Oh, yeah. Why do you go to the podium? You should sit at the table.
I don't know. Because I'm a podium person.
You're a podium, you're a courtroom lawyer.
Yeah.
Yeah. I so much prefer to...
I love my podium.
Yeah.
I'm attached to it. It's so bad.
Then I'd wear sneakers.
Yeah, I know.
Ordering. You know? Yeah. Yeah, clearly, yeah. Yeah. I have to remember. Yes, yeah. No, no, you were right. You were right. You were giving a lot of...
Okay, all of you people who are standing can now sit. All of those that are for Article 10 passing. Now, I'm going to ask all of you who are against Article 10 passing, please stand up and hang on while we count.
So just announce the votes.
Yep, so Article 10 did not pass. Should I tell you all to know the count? There were 92 yes, 88 no. Can I finish counting, can I finish speaking first before you jump up? There were 92 yes, 88 no.
I make a, Priscilla Almquist Olson, 59 Seaver Street, to make a motion to reconsider.
It's a majority. It's a majority.
Okay, so we have...
It is a majority?
Yeah.
And is it debatable? Let's see. This motion must be made at the same day. It's debatable.
Okay, so...
So we have to vote on the reconsideration before we...
So in the motion to reconsider...
Wait, wait a second. I just want to...
Wait, 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 Tony, we want something...
So with the motion to reconsider, hearing what people said, what we'd like to repropose is to reconsider Article 10 to allow amended authorization incorporating your voter feedback to have authors, to put direct restrictions in authorizing that it will be a wrecked community center into the motion and subdivide the rink and take that out. We don't want to miss this opportunity, and we're hoping that by hearing what people said, that this could be a fair compromise on that.
So, Select Board Member Phil Genetti, do you have an actual motion?
It's, you've got to wait on that. She's just writing it. So explain...
There's a lot of notes here.
Allow the motion to reconsider, vote yes on the motion to reconsider. It's reconsidered and she can amend it.
Okay, okay, so at this point in time, ladies and gentlemen, there's been a motion to reconsider, it's been seconded. You've heard from Select Board Member Phil Genetti. I need you to vote on whether or not you want to reconsider it, and then we can talk about what that motion is going to look like. So first is going to be whether or not we want to reconsider, okay? And that is a simple majority vote. So all of those in favor of reconsidering, please raise your orange card. Simple majority vote. All those opposed to reconsidering, okay, that passes by a simple majority. So now, here we are, we're going to reconsider Article 10, and we can have discussion about it. There's going to be a formal motion now proposed, right?
So it goes back to the main motion?
I think there's going to be an amended motion to present it.
So, let me see, I hope I get this straight. So I make a motion to amend Article 10 to solicit proposals for community recreation facilities which prioritize yardly rink and provided that the select board and other town boards and departments shall make an effort in compliance with Massachusetts general laws, the town zoning bylaws, and the subdivision rules and regulations to subdivide the parcel by separating the approximately $50,000, $50,000 square foot yardly rink shown in the northwest corner of the parcel to remain a separate new town-owned parcel prior to the disposition of the property.
Second.
Okay, so do you have that in writing? That's legible, Connor?
Legible.
Okay, so that motion has been seconded. So now, we're going to open for debate.
You want to go first? So, so with that...
Wait, name and address?
Oh, sure, Bill Donahue, 45 Forest Stage Road.
Thank you.
So I think it's important for us to know, too, are you also still intending to keep Article 11 proposed, converting the remaining part of the property from municipal to residential as well?
Did you hear his question? The answer is yes. The answer is yes.
Sorry, I was writing and listening. You asked if we will continue to move forward if this passes as amended with Article 11 to rezone to residential.
From municipal to residential, yes.
Yes, because again, that would be, we have to rezone that site if a private recreation facility is to be built, and the residential zoning in Easton allows recreational and community facilities by special permit.
Are there other zoning provisions other than residential that would still allow recreational to be there and not residential? Thank you.
Perhaps, I don't know, perhaps, but I don't know if we're able to do that outside of the hearing process. Planning boards have to have public hearings leading up to town meeting on those. I'll defer to Greg and counsel on that while I write the amendment.
So Greg Strange, 201, Piquanica. So quickly, on the residential zoning, things that are allowed, single-family house, bed and breakfast, cemeteries, childcare centers, and as Connor said, by special permit, and this is just a bunch of them, it's actually nine pages, the, where is it? Indoor/outdoor recreation facility by special permit. So to, it's not allowed in municipal, so to allow this use, we need to change the zoning. It's just, it's termed residential, but it doesn't mean it's necessarily residential. And I would just quickly say, since I finally got the mic being cut off sooner, as a member of the Historical Commission and the CPA Commission, ten years ago, we built, we spent $2 million, all of us, right, up on Chestnut Street. This year before us, we have some, we have some large playground facilities before us. We just finished pickleball courts up at Union Villa, and we have tennis courts and basketball courts at the high school. CPA does quite a good job with recreation and some of its other charges, but there's only so much money there. And what I was going to say when I got up earlier, Connor said this earlier, long-term strategic planning. I've been chair of the planning board for 17 years because we have to do things ahead of time. You have to have some vision. It's what I like to do for a living. And so this is a great, everybody was right what they talked about tonight, but here's our dear friend, Lee Williams, rest in peace, used to say, "OPM, other people's money." I'm a taxpayer in this town. We already pay a lot. We're already going to have a residential tax base. We need someone to come in and build this facility, both indoor and outdoor. That's the way to do it. And if you, and I hear the calls for other, I've been on lots of subcommittees that have worked for fields. Let's read, let's go back and look at the Gill property. We paid $5.4 million. Maybe we can go back and grab some fields there. Or we've been working with Ames on some lamb chops, workshops, and lamb chops. And they have a bunch of land in town on the other side of 138. There are places in town where we could get more fields if they're needed. But you know what? We need to do it. You need to come to the meetings of all the boards ahead of time. It's really hard to jam the stuff through at town meeting. We need to stay engaged as a community. And I'm glad to see people here tonight, but let's let someone build this facility. We don't have the money to do it.
Okay, so one last point, disrespect everyone's time. Our town has spent a lot of money on, for example, on the Gill property. That land is not usable for athletic fields. It's already been assessed. The fields are pretty much underwater, they're not usable, nobody wants to have their kids playing on that type of land. We have a history of overpaying for land. We have land right now, let's use it for recreational purposes and invest in our children and all of our community and use this land for recreational facilities only.
I would just ask the moderator or whomever is appropriate to read the amended motion fully, because it agrees with the sentiment of limiting it to recreational.
Sure, and one procedural clarification on the gentleman's question before, if there were to be a motion to amend, for example, on Article 11, which is the zoning article, you couldn't move to amend to say, change the district to something else to business or something else because the prerequisites for coming to town meeting are planning board hearings, duly advertised, and all of those things. And so any amendments would have to be in the scope. And so an amendment like that, I would suggest, would not be in the scope, and it wouldn't pass AG muster. So approval by the Attorney General.
Denise Higgins, Ford New Pond Way. Greg, you just said it for me. You said, "Let's not jam it," and that's exactly what we're doing. We're doing this amendment on the fly. It's very apparent that there's some interest here by the town. I love the interest by the town, because this is a great location for us to do something really superlative for this town. If you love the town of Easton and you like it for everything that it is, can't we do something really super special? I urge you to think about this. Do not give this up. I can't tell you how many years ago this was, I can't calculate it, but I was in this town meeting probably 20 years, someone can tell me, 20, 25 years, when we were making a decision on Summer Street for some fields. The proximity of those fields was great for the high school and the school. We have a one-campus system. And we gave that up and it became residential. I'm not against residential, truly, I'm not. But its location was pretty prime at that time. There is not another spot in the town of Easton that has this amazing location and this amazing potential. Please think about that. Let's take just a little bit more time and decide what we really want to do. The Y may be a great opportunity. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against it, truly not against it, but let's take a little bit more time. Thank you.
I think that what, that's what we're trying to do, is to have open for proposals, because that's, that's what we, that's where we'll see the ideas for that.
Aaron Waluka, 31 R., Piquanica, DAV. I believe that the amended warrant's complete now with additional language, and we've all heard, correct? Is that correct?
Yes, I can read.
If we could hear that, because we might be talking about something you guys already are proposing.
You want me to read it again? Is that adjusted?
Oh, well, I think there's more than we've already heard, isn't there?
I'm sorry?
I believe there's more to the amended warrant than we've already heard. I think Connor was writing it while we were all talking. Isn't that not the case?
Right, I think, I think Select Board Member Phil Genetti tried to explain it, but I can read it in its full context right now.
Thank you.
Okay, so I move that the town vote to change the use to be available for disposition and further to authorize the Select Board to convey the property located at 388 Depot Street, assessors map 38U, lot 17, to solicit proposals for community recreation facilities which preserve yardly rink and provided that the Select Board and other town boards and departments shall make a good, faithful effort in compliance with Massachusetts general laws, the town zoning bylaws, and the subdivision rules and regulations to subdivide the parcel by separating the approximately $50,000 square foot yardly rink shown in the northwest corner of the parcel to remain a separate, new, town-owned parcel prior to the disposition of the property.
Thank you. On that, I'd propose parking. I don't, we don't know from looking at the picture on the screen that 50,000 square feet is going to be enough for yardly rink and parking area, not necessarily where it is now, possibly behind it, so it's not intruding on the frontage that the land could otherwise be used for. So it's difficult to act on that. Can that be added in? Or do I have to make a motion that we add in enough land for sufficient parking for yardly rink? And then...
You can make an amendment to the amended motion, but it has to be in writing.
Okay. All right, I will do that. While I'm writing that out, there's one thing I would like to point out. I know that the planning board and the town has been working for a long time on making Easton more walkable, meaning essentially, not to exclude other parts of town, but right now, they, I believe they've been focusing on connecting Northeastern Center to Target, essentially, making Northeastern Center to Five Corners and to Target all walkable, so our kids can walk down the street and go visit these places. This one happens to be almost dead center between Northeastern Center and Five Corners. I agree with keeping it municipal, more municipal as a use for recreation. The Y concerns me a little bit, as some people pointed out, the costs, and like they said, $5.4 million for Gill's land. For a quarter of that, we could take this building down and maintain it for a number of years as a field or as recreation. I would personally love to see, and I don't know if anyone else agrees, but we go to Sharon, Foxborough, Mansfield, West Bridgewater, pretty much every surrounding town to see they have the half shells or a place for concerts or for the kids to have concerts and things like that. Easton is only in Northeastern Center, which is very condensed. I'd love to see something like that there, where townspeople can have a destination between Northeastern Center and Five Corners that's walkable for a lot of people to go and enjoy themselves without having to spend a fortune.
Priscilla Almquist Olson, 59 Seaver Street, Northeastern, Mass. Moderator, would you be kind enough to repeat his amendment, because some of us seniors have a little difficulty hearing a microphoned speech?
Mr. Waluka's amendment? He hasn't written it out yet.
What was the gist, please?
We're not going to wait for him to write it out.
Okay, all right. I would like to speak to the amendment. We still are selling, we're subdividing off, but we haven't, we haven't delineated how many acres will be provided for recreational facility, recreational possibilities, soccer fields, whatever. I think that's important to put in there. How, if we're going to sell the building and subdivide off the remaining portions, we need to know how much is remaining. We have to know how much is going to be on the, you know, is it going to be one acre on the facility or not? Also, I have been told tonight that in Randolph, there is a municipal recreational facility. There's a swimming pool, there's a track to run. Many of us seniors cannot afford the YMCA, all right? I know people here tonight can certainly afford it, but seniors on a fixed income cannot afford to go to the YMCA. They can't do the swimming, which is very important for seniors, and they can't exercise on those bikes and do all the other stuff, the treadmills and so forth. I think we should reconsider if that building is not convertible into a center for our citizens as a municipal recreational facility. If not, is $700,000 too much? I don't think it is. We're paying $9 million for a treatment facility, and I and several other people a few years ago said, "Don't get that artificial turf because of the PFASs." Nobody listened. Voted it in, and what do we have today? We have a treatment plant that has to take out the PFASs, and we're paying $9 million, and we're talking about $700,000 to take down a building and put up another building that's more able to accommodate a municipal recreational center with swimming pool, tracks, et cetera? I don't know. There's something wrong about this. And if we're going to take the, if we're not going to do that, take down the building, sell the building, have a revert clause to a YMCA if they fail, so we get the building back. Or those that seems to me to be the... and we're talking about $700,000 to take down a building and put up another building that's more able to accommodate a municipal recreational center with swimming pool tracks, et cetera? I don't know. There's something wrong about this. And if we're not going to do that, take down the building, sell the building, have a revert clause to a YMCA if they fail, so we get the building back. Those seem to me to be the two possibilities. We need to think about the future. I'm 80 years old. I'm not going to be here in, I know I don't look at, I'm not going to be... I'm not going to be here in 20 years. I graduated Alderman's in 1960. Valedictorian. But I know that we had limited sports facilities, all right? I was on the basketball team, I was field hockey, did some track, played softball. Those were very important. I went to college and I played varsity basketball because of what Alderman's provided. But today, it's different. You have all these other sports. I can't even think of, what about some of these sports? Some of these things that, what is this thing that they do with the...
Highlight?
What is it?
Highlight.
If I may, so your first suggestion to turn it into municipal space...
Who's talking?
Down here.
Oh, Mark, hi.
Hi, how are you, Priscilla? So your first suggestion to turn it into municipal space, and it was a bit of an implication that there would be an indoor use as part of it. In my estimation, there is no way that could occur without a debt exclusion override. And, you know, I don't see that happening in the near future for a debt exclusion override to exist to bring in a recreational facility like you were suggesting. The way for that to occur is for private money to do that. And, you know, I think about all the ball fields that do exist in town. A lot of people had mentioned there isn't a lot of fields, and I would very politely disagree. I do think there are a lot. They might be hard to get space on that court. But I also consider what Chair Folgenetti had mentioned. In our older community, there's no place for older people to go, especially in colder months. Older people aren't going to be outside. They go to what would be a YMCA. So I consider, we all consider that as part of this. And further, you know, the idea to wait, I completely appreciate that, but at the same time, we've run the risk of losing an opportunity for something to be built there that will service all of Easton and the older community. I consider, at this point in time, what is more needed? A space that would serve all of Easton or just maybe a younger generation with outdoor space? And then in addition to that, the suggestion to demolish Center School, remediate Center School, the asbestos in Center School, and then plow out the fields, redo the fields, that means and just make it a park? That is an enormous cost. That is not $700,000 to do all of what is being suggested and then add to that the maintenance of that. So it's not just $700,000. It blows up exponentially. So these were all, at least for everybody here, these are all the things that I was considering as I made this decision. That decision is to support this.
So you're saying, Mark, that seniors don't go out in the winter?
No, no, no. Please don't twist my words. That is not at all what I am suggesting.
Okay, in my Swedish tradition, we have a saying, "There's no such thing as bad weather, only bad clothes." And we, our children are outside, rain, snow, lizards, wind, whatever. So I don't agree with that.
Okay, all right, ladies and gentlemen. So before, we had the proposal of an amendment by a citizen, Mr. Waluka, Aaron Waluka. He has now written up that amendment. And because of the fact that it's an amendment to the amended motion, I'm going to read it, but I'm going to ask him to go to microphone and after I read it, tell me that this is, in fact, the way that you intended the amendment to the amended motion to read and just say, just say, "So moved."
Can you repeat that part? No, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Okay, just listen to me, and if you agree with it, say "so moved." Got it? Okay, here we go. So here it is. "I move that the town vote to change the use to be available for disposition and further to authorize the Select Board to convey the property located at 388 Depot Street, Assessors Map 38U, Lot 17, to solicit proposals for community recreation facilities, which preserve yardly rink and provided that the Select Board and other town boards and departments shall make a good faith effort in compliance with Massachusetts general laws, the town's zoning bylaws, and the subdivision rules and regulations to subdivide the parcel by separating the approximately 50,000 square feet or such area sufficient to accommodate yardly rink and parking for its users, shown in the northwest corner of the parcel to remain a separate new town-owned parcel prior to the disposition of the property."
So moved.
Awesome. Okay, so I made a second to that motion, if anybody... Okay, so now we have an amended amendment that we need to vote on before we vote on anything else. And it is a majority vote, correct?
So remember, so remind them that this is just on the second amendment about parking.
This is just to approve, or not to approve...
To adopt.
The adopt, that last language that Mr. Waluka put in, about the 50,000 square feet or such area sufficient to accommodate yardly rink and parking for its users. Just that part of the amended motion, okay? All of those in favor of adding that phrase, that language, please raise your orange card. Okay? All of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Okay, so that part of the amendment passes by with a majority vote. Now, we come to the amended motion as I just read the whole thing. So now we need to vote on that motion as amended.
No, you vote on the amendment.
Right, on the amendment, okay? That I read in earlier, okay? Everybody follow me? All right, good. So again, this is a majority vote. All of those in favor of the language, the amendment, please raise your orange card.
Yeah, what's that?
It's just to adopt the language. Yep, go ahead. Wait, somebody said a point of order.
Are we just voting to amend the original article or are we voting on the amended article?
We're voting on the language, voting of adopting the language into the...
So this is not the final vote on the article? Thank you.
It is not the final. Just the language, okay? All those in favor of adopting the language in the motion as amended, raise your orange card, okay? All those opposed, raise your orange card. Okay, so the language as amended in the motion has been accepted or passed by a majority vote. Now, we have to vote on the actual motion itself.
Right.
Okay?
As amended.
Did somebody say "read it"? Seriously?
Yeah, do you want me to read it again?
But I need to see it in order to verify. Can I take a look at it first?
And on one sec. Point of order. There's no indication on how many acres...
I'm sorry, can you just hang on for a minute for the point of order while, because our clerk is trying to figure out his right down the actual motion, amended motion.
Okay.
Okay, so to your point of order, or point of information?
Yes, missing from the motion that we're about to vote on is the amount of land which will go with the building and the number of remaining acres which will be used for recreational purposes subdivided off from the building. I think that's very important. Without that information, the building could be sold with so much land that there would be insufficient area for any recreational fields.
So to be clear, that was not in the chair's amended motion or the amendment to the amendment?
No, I'm talking about Dottie's.
I understand that. Dottie's motion did not make that level of specificity. The amendment incorporates a feedback tonight on restricting the authorization for sale for recreational or community centers and subdividing out with the amended amendment, subdividing out the rink and sufficient space for parking. It did not get into saying it must be X amount of feet for building and Y amount of feet for field. We can amend the amended amendment, but I will show my hand that I would strongly recommend against it because we're getting to a point of being so hyper-specific there with this authorization as amended twice, already making clear that it must only be sold for recreational uses and carving out for rink. So that was not in there.
Well, I think, Connor, that it's possible that Dottie could include sufficient acreage for recreational facilities, including playing fields.
Priscilla, the reason that I didn't include that is because if we pare this down, we're never going to get a bidder on it if we make it that specific. We need to get ideas and feedback from proposals, and we can take those things into consideration, but it'll be dead. Nobody will respond to it if you make that many restrictions. So it was intentional that I didn't put anything like that in there.
But it also gives, Dottie, it gives you freedom to restrict the remaining parcel to a point where no recreational purpose could be used for that parcel. Right?
Okay, I'm going to end this now because this is becoming a debate back and forth, okay? So at this point in time, I'm going to end it, and I'm going to reread the twice amended motion, okay? And we're going to vote on the twice amended motion on whether or not this is how you want to accept the article. And if it fails, it's going to pass by two-thirds majority. If it fails, we go back to the original motion to reconsider, the original motion on the article, the main motion, okay?
Point of order. The motion to reconsider was allowed.
Right.
We went to the second, we went back to the article. The article has been amended.
You're voting on your...
So is this amended article, it's debated, does we then vote again on the original article?
One more vote, one more vote. The amended, the amended, twice amended now, article. Okay? I'm going to read it again for everybody's benefit, okay? "I move that the town vote to change the use to be available for disposition and further to authorize the Select Board to convey the property located at 388 Depot Street, Assessors Map 38U, Lot 17, to solicit proposals for community recreation facilities, which preserve yardly rink and provided that the Select Board and other town boards and departments shall make a good faith effort in compliance with Massachusetts general laws, the town's zoning bylaws, and the subdivision rules and regulations to subdivide the parcel by separating the approximately 50,000 square feet or such area sufficient to accommodate yardly rink and parking for its users, shown in the northwest corner of the parcel to remain a separate new town-owned parcel prior to the disposition of the property." Okay? So all of those in favor, again, it has to be a two-thirds majority vote in order to pass. All those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Okay? And so the twice amended motion passes by two-thirds majority.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Marjorie, what's on your mind?
"I move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts general law, Chapter 48, to amend the May 17, 2021 Town of Easton zoning map. Original date, March 7, 1973, as printed in the warrant under Article 11. By way of explanation, this subject property is the location of the Center School, which will be decommissioned once the Blanchay Ames Elementary School opens and begins operations. This amendment rezones the property to be consistent with the surrounding properties, which are zoned residential and would allow for either residential use or community center slash recreational facilities by special permit, as noted in Article 10. The change has no effect on the current use as a school, as the residential zone allows use of the land by the town for educational purposes. Taken together with Article 10, this article would enable the town, through the Select Board, to solicit proposals, including community recreational facilities, which also prioritize the preservation of yardly rink to the fullest extent feasible. Select Board recommends."
Finances committee recommends.
Planning and zoning board.
Planning and zoning board met on October 11, 2022, and voted 5-0 in favor to recommend Article 11.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 11?
Not sure, Karen Tucker, 226 Turnpike Street. I'm not sure if this is exactly, but has the town considered using the CVs to demolition the building or the...